To our eyes, I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and thanks for attending. On the roll call we have Richard, Stacy, myself, and Lee, and attendance Dan and Tom and Chad are absent. Devon wishing to approve the agenda for today.
I'll make the motion.
Bush by Lee.
Second.
Second by Stacy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That carries four zero. New business, Q Comp.
It's still early.
Who's on first?
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning indeed. As you know, we've gone through numerous presentations on Q Comp as we've been developing the plan. And so we are asking the board for a vote today, but essentially we're really looking for a vote of confidence in moving forward and submitting our Q Comp plan to the state at this point. Our teachers did vote on the Q Comp plan and there was an overwhelming majority who were in favor. Around ninety-five percent of teachers did vote to similarly submit a plan to the state. And so that's what we're asking for at this point. And what that means is that we would submit a plan to the state between April first and April fifteenth. And once we had that plan submitted, then we would have our place in line with the state for our plan to be reviewed. And then we would be working to implement Q Comp for the 2013-14 school year through the spring and summer. And then we would be hearing back from the Department of Education anytime between really the end of July, all the way out to, yeah, July or August is what we're hoping for. Could be as late as September that we'd hear back from the Department of Education. But we would be ready to go at the start of school with Q Comp up and running. And the first phase of this upon submission is we would start posting some of those teacher leader positions that we've discussed previously. And the first position that would be posted would be a Q Comp coordinator position, followed by the nine peer coaching positions. So that would be kind of the first phase here after this vote. Are there any, anything you'd like to add, Jeff, at this point? That sums it up very well. Any questions?
No, at this time.
I do. Just clarification. So you'd start posting, but we won't for sure know if it's for sure go until potentially September.
Correct.
So these postings and hirings are tentative based on that?
They're not, actually.
They're not?
They're not based on approval because we're really going to need to backfill those positions to make sure that we've got qualified teachers in the classroom. And so we will, we will be hiring teachers to backfill for these positions of a Q Comp coordinator and these peer coaching positions. And we do have the funds in place, you know, because we may not know if it's been approved until really even after the start of the school year. We really do need to do that in order to be responsible and have the, and have the teachers in the classroom ready for students. But we do have the funds set aside that the board has allocated and that will pay for those positions.
And I assume that if we didn't do Q Comp, we'd be needing to get some kind of positions anyway for the, for the state's evaluation? Someone else have questions? I have one more and just put it over here.
What are, well, let's go. What are the chances we are not approved by the Minnesota Department of Education?
Very slim. Everything that's in my conversations with the Department of Education, once we submit the plan, it's not about how not to make the plan work. It becomes a dialogue about revising and refining the plan so that it meets all the, you know, the requirements that's set forth by the MTE, but also a very workable plan for the school this year. So, and you know, we have run a number of the kind of key components of the plan that we've built by the Department of Education. And they've said, yes, this, you know, looks like the right kind of work to be done here. We've also built our plan based on what we've seen as best practice in other districts in already qualified Q Comp plans. And so we're very confident that we'll be able to make it through that process. And we would know very early on if we were not in time with our submission and if forty percent of Minnesota students were already in Q Comp districts, therefore we were ineligible. So we wouldn't run into that, that staffing issue at that point. We will know by the time we submit whether we're in time.
So today you're looking for approval to go forward to the state with the plan? Does that also then include going forward to posting to the?
Yes.
So internal as well as external?
Correct.
And can you just, because I don't think we've had this on the public, how many different plans did the group look at when we were?
We primarily reviewed, I believe, five different plans.
All from obviously approved?
Yes, all from approved districts. And those plans really do reflect, you know, best practice. And those plans that we reviewed were Minnetonka, Wayzata, Hopkins, North St. Paul, Maplewood, which is actually one district there, and then Bloomington as well. So those were the five districts that we looked at. These were also the districts recommended to us by the Department of Education to look at as well as plans that, you know, met a very high standard.
And then you also looked at the new teacher evaluation model?
Yes, and tried to incorporate as many elements of that new teacher evaluation model into this so that they really mirror each other and we're going to be doing as little redundant work as possible. And so that was a key goal of ours throughout the process. And our plan, where our plan does differ from some of those that have already been submitted that we looked at is that we really do much more closely mirror the elements of that new teacher evaluation plan that are coming through. And so that was very purposeful by this committee.
And then as the state looks at our plan, and if there are changes, will those come back to us before?
They'll, the whole plan will come back to the, to the board again before implementation for a final vote. Just as it will come back to the PLSCA for a final vote on the teacher's side as well. And so we absolutely expect that there will be changes and the plan will be coming back in its totality.
And I'm sorry, I know you said August was when, is that, or when will it come back from the state so that we know?
We're hopeful, just with timelines, that somewhere in end of July, in the earliest, that, you know, we will be ready for a signature by the commissioner. But it could be August, maybe September. Their timeline that's listed is up to October first to make a decision. But in conversation with them, they say they do a little bit better than that. So I would anticipate they're going to be on target with the late July, early August, or sometime in August, our communication back to the district that the plan is met substantial approval. And just one note too, you know, we would be looking to do some posting here and some hiring. But if we have those people in the system and then if it was to be the case that we were not approved, we will find good work for those people to be doing. And it will, you know, we will find ways to, to get some of that money back.
It's been my experience that if you apply, you are always accepted unless you are a wild card that chooses not to follow the rules that they've set forth because they're very prescriptive to the districts on what you can and cannot do. So the reality is this plan will be accepted if it's in time. If it's, if it's under that forty percent cutoff, which is why we're trying to get it in very early April. And it will come, my experience has been it will come back maybe two or three times and sent back to the state before finally the commissioner will sign it. And what Jeff and Matt are referring to is that final time it comes back is when they would bring it back to you.
Yes.
Because once it comes back to us, then we have to do the work on it. And then it has to be sent back in and then they have to review it. And each time that happens is six weeks in intervals. So that's why it takes so long for it to happen. So we might be very lucky, but in my past experience, it was after school started when it came back. So the plan went ahead and was implemented and it worked out just fine. But in my opinion, it's better to go ahead and assume that it's going to happen as soon as we get the okay from the state that we're in the queue at the right place and we are under, we're in before that forty percent is met. That's the real determining factor for us.
Other questions?
I'll make a motion.
Actually, I have one thing to do before I do that. I need to step back. I need to point an acting clerk because Tom is not with us today. Double motion to?
Like to point Rich.
Rich, okay. Devon, second?
I'll second.
Lee, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That carries four zero. Okay, on to Q Comp. I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve the recommendations.
Okay, I have a motion by Lee.
I will second that motion.
Second by Rich. So any further discussion?
I just want to make a comment. I will be voting for this. And I do really appreciate the work and effort that the committee put in on it. I think they've done a great job in a tight timeframe because we asked them to get it done, you know, rather quickly. And I think in the end that this really gives us a chance to give our teachers the mentorship that they've been asking for. And in the end, it's going to really, you know, give our students a better education. So that's a great move.
Thank you. I know it's been a lot of work in a short timeframe.
I'd like to say thanks to the team that worked on this. And reading the report, I was impressed by the fact that most of the positive comments came from the professional development aspect of it, not so much the performance pay. They thought it really benefited the teachers on the performance or on the professional development aspect of the plan. And I find this plan is not unlike many plans we have in private business where there's a professional development aspect of it and also performance part of it. And just to follow up on my visit to the state Capitol last week, talking with Representative Mark Court, who is the House Finance, Education Finance Committee Chair. He said Q Comp will not go away in reference to a question about the new performance pay, or performance plan. And Q Comp, Q Comp will not go away there, so.
Well, I could just make one comment and that, as I'm very proud of this plan and of the work that has been accomplished in this tight timeframe, so thank you also to our board members, Lee and Stacy that sat on this committee and our full committee and our leadership by both Matt and Jeff. I believe that this will position us for the incoming teacher evaluation system, but also just position us to better meet the needs of our teachers and their ongoing learning as professionals and support them as we move forward with new initiatives. So this just gives us such flexibility and such an array of opportunities for, for leadership by our teachers, for support by our new teachers, for our new teachers and for our ongoing continuing contract teachers. So I'm very excited about our Q Comp plan and proposal and delighted that we're getting it in at this early date so that we don't come under the wire, if you will. So, thank you.
Further questions, discussion? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries four zero. Thank you. Jeff, on to kindergarten assessment proposal.
Yes, you have a senior board packet, a proposal from our kindergarten study committee. Just to give a brief background, we've had a kindergarten group together of teachers, early childhood, administrators, looking at our kindergarten practices and looking at our half-day and full-day kindergarten program. Partly, the recent study is really too full. It's been seven years since we implemented all-day, everyday kindergarten. And we wanted to take an opportunity to look back at really what we've learned. Where have we come as a district? And start and, and see, you know, really, did we achieve what we set out to do with looking at all-day, everyday kindergarten? And I'm not here to present the results of that just yet this evening. But the other part of the study is to look at the best practice and look at what's happening at the state level with early childhood and look at what are some of the things to have a quality kindergarten and early childhood program that we should be doing as a district? And so one component of that is for your consideration this morning, is to look at how we do assessment in the district of our incoming kindergarten students. Currently, when students start school, kindergarten teachers use the first six weeks to assess kids on just basic incoming skills of students. And there's, there's a tremendous, there's several challenges with that. Because you're, you're pulling kids throughout the course of a six-week period to see where kids are at and that's taking away from some of the teaching time. And so as you look at that and as you look at the presence and the proposal that's listed in your board packet, what the committee is looking, is recommending is a pilot proposal to have the assessment and invite students in before school starts this coming August to assess kids within a small group in a individual format that achieves four purposes. One, have a welcoming environment for kids, a chance for kids and families to come in and meet the teachers, meet principals of the building, as well as to take care of all the beginning of the school paperwork. Second thing is, is to get a sense of where kids are at before school starts. Recognize, you know, assessing students going through kind of a checklist, looking at letters, sounds, numbers, but getting a sense of where kids are at before they walk in the door. Using that information then to then look at, are there, is there any enrichment differentiation or intervention things that need to be discussed or put in place as we start going through the school year? And the third, and the other component of that rationale is to better utilize the time, the first six weeks of school of instruction to tailor it to the needs of the students that are coming into the classroom. And so this proposal that's being presented for you is for your consideration and approval that our kindergarten teachers would be inviting families in to assess them during the week of August fifth through the ninth. It would be an individualized scheduled time and some of the logistics are listed in the proposal. And to, it would be funded out of our innovation funding, which is time for teachers. Once the assessments are complete, building teachers, the kindergarten teachers and building principal would meet together at the end of the week to go through all of the information and to use that information in setting up the start of the school year before we start on August twenty-sixth. So that proposal is in your packet and we're seeking board approval.
Double motion, accept the kindergarten assessment proposal.
I'll make a motion.
By Lee?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Rich. Questions? I know I have a few, but I'll let you.
I do too. One off the top of my head, you're saying during this assessment, parents would accompany the students?
Correct.
So will these assessments be done in the evenings or to accommodate if a parent can come during the day?
Both.
Okay. And in the past, the parent hasn't been involved in any kind of assessment. Is that true?
Aside from just, you know, filling out paperwork, but in this type of model, parents would accompany their child to the assessment. Parents wouldn't necessarily be involved in this assessment either. They would be filling out paperwork, you know, some of the types of things and getting information on the school. But it would be a one-to-one setting where the teacher would be working with the students who go through the checklist information.
So there, there's two things that are happening, then you're working with the student to alleviate some of their fears, but also the parent to alleviate some of theirs?
Correct.
All right.
Jeff, is this, so would they know their, would this be their actual teacher or not just a group of teachers?
Not necessarily. Class placements are not made until the middle part of August. We start placing these students prelimin, at a preliminary basis, looking at where kids are at. But the placement letters would not be sent out until, I think, August fourteenth, that Wednesday. And so teachers would use this information to make class lists. And so there's, when, as parents bring their students to their home school where their school would be attending, their child would be meeting with a kindergarten teacher that they may or may not have for the school year.
Is there anything, I mean, I, I just know how kids latch on. I mean, they meet somebody and this is my teacher. I mean, that's going to be the first question they're going to ask.
I think in an ideal world, we'd love to have, and even our committee talked about, just the idea of it would be great for the class teacher to meet with their students and do this assessment. You know, we've looked at what other districts are doing. Some districts do either way. We're not, when we had Kerry Ross from the Department of Education come in as part of our study and talk about this, you know, one of the things she says, yeah, there, there are some connections that are built immediately. But in that type of an assessment setting, usually kids and families are not necessarily connecting that quickly in that period of time, but just knowing that there's a familiar face, that that could be their teacher. But you're setting the stage of, you know, whether I'm your teacher or not, you're coming to a great school and you're going to be in a great classroom with a lot of great friends and have a great experience in kindergarten.
No, I think it's a great thing. Actually, I think my kids did this. So they're old now, but I mean, I know we did do this ten, so I think it's really a valuable thing.
Rich?
Some of the students could be judged not to be ready?
No, you know, for the most part, as you go through the, the assessment, you know, when, when students turn, you know, five, they are eligible for kindergarten. You know, what the assessment would do would give us a sense of where they're at with their readiness, whether it be social, emotional, or, or the, just the types of things that we need to take into consideration to ease their transition into kindergarten.
And do you guys have a plan for those latecomers?
Yes. We fully anticipate that, you know, we, we started some very preliminary communication that we're considering this as a district. But we know that there are going to be conflicts where not all parents will be able to bring their students in that week of August fifth through the ninth. Our plan then for students who cannot participate during that time or families that cannot participate during that time is that we would then conduct the assessments once school starts, meeting with parents and do it in very much the traditional fashion that we do right now. So we would be assessing those students, but that would be done within the first week of school or immediately as opposed to drawing that out over the course of several weeks.
Go ahead.
I would just say that this, this opportunity is one that I think is really going to be valuable to our families. It's going to relieve a lot of fears by our students and our parents who wonder, do I have the right forms? Have I completed all the right paperwork? Is the school going to be welcoming and accepting of my child? And then the child just being able to see and to feel comfortable in this, in the school setting. So I think it's going to be a very positive experience for our students. What I hope this would be, would be a kind of a lab experience for us to say, is this something we want to do for all students K five in fourteen fifteen? Where we would have the first two days of regular school would not be held and individual forty-five minute, thirty, thirty to forty-five minute conferences would be held to assess readiness, to meet the teacher, to find out what the family's goals are for the students in the coming year and to make those connections. What we're hearing from our partner neighboring districts that are doing this right now is that they're gaining six weeks of instruction that they didn't have previously because you spend those first six weeks collecting an array of data about that student and making those connections. So I think it's, it's, this is going to be very valuable to us as we look to that opportunity in the coming year. And we'll take that, of course, through meet and confer and take it through the board. But this is kind of the beginning step for us, a baby step, if you will, of looking at this for our district.
Thanks. Any further questions?
Just one other one. Is it, it seems kind of early, although I know you need to do the class list and things, but if you're going to be doing some of it after school starts anyway, is it early because we're starting school early this year? Or is there thought to doing it like just a week before school starts in the future?
The committee recognized that the summer's, looks a little short coming up. And so that did play into it, you know, with the fall workshop, new staff workshop, and looking at a time where people are not committed in terms of fall workshop activities or, you know, if they're working with new staff as mentors or other types of curriculum marketing. So for this summer, for this proposal, we're looking at August fifth through the ninth. You know, and we'll look, we'll use this opportunity to kind of say, is that the right timeframe? The committee at one point even talked about it'd be great to have people come in at the end of June, you know, and looking at different, you know, when is the best time to bring kids for this type of, you know, assessment? And, you know, so we talked about that. We also talked about it would be great to do the first two days of school. But given some of the other logistical challenges of that, we decided not to consider that as part of this type of proposal. And so we're looking at it before school type of thing. And so that August fifth through the ninth recognizes the new staff workshop, fall workshop, and then the early start. But looking, moving forward, you know, that's one of the things we're going to look at, is, is that the right time? Should be closer to school. Is there value in looking and kind of doing what other districts are doing, which is the first couple of days of school, where they're assessing, you know, what are some pros and cons to that?
Because it's, it's a little bit of a communication nightmare too because the first part of August is when a lot of people decide to take the family vacation.
Part of it too, we wanted to see the early assessment to see how we could use that information to set classes. And to have, you know, balanced classes. At some point, when kids are coming into kindergarten, they're coming in all over the place. And to get a sense on, you know, having a balanced classes and identifying, are there some students that need some additional support? Are there some, some students that need that additional enrichment? And then to use that time to be planned before we start the school year with those kids.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries four zero. Thank you. Julie, with the resolution? I'd read the whole thing, but I'm sure you're going to do it.
Good morning. It is a long resolution. And this resolution in essence is just, it's one of those resolutions that we're bringing forward because of the delay that we're having with the Department of Education for our review and comment. What this allows us to do is to continue with our projects, borrow money from the general fund and be able to repay it from the bond proceeds if we need to. If you recall, we have a million dollars out of our capital fund that we've allocated for these projects already. And so we don't believe that we'll need this resolution or we'll utilize it. But we want it out here just in case we do need it if there's a continued delay. And so that's the reason for the resolution. So in essence, it allows us to borrow money from the general fund and repay it with the bonds when we actually get the money.
Double motion to accept the resolution for reimbursement of the expenses. Stacy?
Second, Dan.
Aye. Rich, further questions? Just double motion, a second. We have a roll call vote on this. Rich?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Aye. Lee?
Aye.
That carries four zero. Two thousand thirteen building permits.
We were able to go out for bid for our, for phase one, our mechanical equipment package bid. And you can see in your board packet that- And you can see in your board packet that Chua, Ballhopper, and Louvre received the first bid package of five hundred thirty-one thousand two hundred seventy-six dollars. Ryan Companies received the bid for the boilers and accessories in the amount of six hundred and four thousand six forty. And then Train Company received bids, we are asking for acceptance of the bids for the modular cooled chillers and the fluid coolers. For the total amount for one million three hundred ninety-nine thousand one sixteen. This is fifteen point five percent below the estimated equipment package bid that we brought forward when we were, in the original proposal. Most of it is in sales tax, or ninety-four thousand four hundred forties in sales tax, because we accepted the bids ourselves, and we are a tax-exempt organization. And then a hundred and, almost a hundred and forty thousand dollars that would normally be contractor markups that we saved because we had the bids ourselves. So it's quite a significant amount of money that we were able to save by doing this ourselves.
Do I have a motion to accept the building improvements phase one? By Stacy? Second. By Lee? Questions?
Julie, when I'm looking at, this is a different format than what I'm used to seeing. So these are just the people that actually got the bids?
Yes, and you have a bid tabulation sheet in your packet from all the companies that bid. But we are asking for approval for the low bids.
Right, okay.
So the ones that I mentioned were the low bids for those particular packages.
Okay, so all the other places that bid are on here in some place?
Yes, and then on another bid tab sheet.
Okay.
But you do have that in your packet as well.
Other questions?
I would just remark that I'm delighted that we're able to save that much by doing this really thoughtfully and making sure that we're accessing our ability to be tax-free and going out for bid in a way that's going to, at the very onset, help us save money as we go through these huge projects of each of our buildings.
Was there any surprise that the limited amount of bids from certain projects are, because of the detailed work? It limits the number of groups available to bid?
I don't believe that there was any surprises when it came to the bids.
Okay. All right. The numbers all fell well in line and well below, which was, was very nice. There were just a couple of things I was surprised there were one or two bidders when some were eligible, but it's the scope of the work I know dictates who made that.
Dictates some of that, and so there's limited companies that are able to provide some of those services because of that scope of work. That's why the plan.
Any further questions? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries four zero. Group A construction update.
Because Jim is on vacation this week, I have the privilege to provide you with our project update. And right now, we are over spring break, which is next week. We'll be working in this building. One of the areas that we're working on is to improve the structure of this building so that we can re-roof this, this particular building. And so that project will be ongoing over spring break, and it will continue into the summer, but they will start work next week on this building. And then we are working also in the buildings of Edgewood, Westwood, and Glendale to improve and secure our entrances. They will be also working next week, and we'll have doors cut into their offices so that as we have guests that enter into our buildings, that they're forced to come through our offices before they enter into the main part of the building. And so that is also happening next week. And of course, you know, the Hidden Oaks Middle School, where that is our big project this summer, and we continue to ramp up to begin that project as soon as school is over.
Any questions on the group A project?
In the finance committee, what they talked about during the facilities commission issue, they'll be adding during the spring break in this building, cutting through the floor and adding footings and posts internal to the building here on the left-hand side of the hallway, and then another post right out here to add some, some support for the new roof.
There'll actually be one right behind you. So they'll be against our walls and, you know, eventually be unobtrusive that you won't really notice that they're here. But we do need it to support this, the roof and re-rooking this building.
Just the bowling alley will be refitted.
Yes.
And so as, as far as the disruption in work for next week for employees here?
We have Monday and Tuesday, the offices are closed due to spring break, and then, so the majority of the work they'll try and have completed Monday and Tuesday. There will be some other work that's being done, but in like this room, they'll wait till later in the week to do that because it's unoccupied. But we do have some areas that we know that staff could go and work that we've allocated and allowed them to do so that if there is disruption, they're able to move somewhere else.
Thank you.
One question on the secure entrances for Edgewood and Greenwood. I guess you're starting on that next week. Will that be finished before the kids come back? Or I'm not sure what this, how long that project's going to take. So what I'm wondering is, how will the kids be coming in? Is that been, are they being rerouted?
Well, because next week is spring break, that will be completed over spring break, and so they'll, but they'll, the doors that we have will stay there, and so as kids come to school, they won't notice it. But once school begins, those doors will be locked, and people will have to come into school through the offices.
Further questions? Thank you. Looks like that's it. Any, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Sure.
Second.
Thanks.
Stacy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries four zero. Thanks, and have a good morning.